Nebraska State Board of Education work session.
Did you mic them?
Yes, it is. The May State Board work session will now come to order. Denise, please call the roll. And I'd like to remind you, please, that Molly O'Halloran contacted me in advance to let me know that she would be absent from today's meeting due to other commitments. Thank you, Denise.
Thanks. Lisa Fricki.
Present. I can't reach.
Katseko Johns.
Here.
Rachel Wise.
Here.
John Whitzel.
Here.
Molly O'Halloran. Patricia Tim.
Yes.
Maureen Nichols.
Here.
Patrick McPherson.
Present.
Commissioner Blumstedt.
Present.
Seven present, one absent.
Thank you, Denise. Live web streaming will be available through the State Board of Education website. If I may remind Board members to engage their microphones before speaking and to turn them off when they are done speaking. And please, turn off your cell phones. Thank you very much. We'll proceed on with the Commissioner with the consent agenda process.
Yeah, just kind of our typical reminder, you've got a pink slip in front of you. If there's anything on the consent agenda that you would like to be removed, just go ahead and fill out that pink form and put it in front of Scott there in that box. And that's the normal process on that front, so.
Thank Commissioner, report of rules.
Yeah, our rules, there's a, you can see there, there's a memo attached there. Get it to open up. Rule nine is approved as a hearing draft, so that'll be going to hearing on May 16th. Rule 15, this one I have approved today. So that's updated news, so. I'm just looking over.
Okay, good.
So that rule, Rule 15, was approved by the Governor. And there's still several waiting, Governors or Secretary of State approval, Rule 71, 72, 23, and 24. So that's what we have for an update on rules.
Board priorities and policy research, Ryan For.
Yeah, so what, Ryan's not here. Anyway, what I am going to do is actually give a presentation of a little bit around my kind of evaluation process. As you know, Leslie Donnelly is supposed to come over here about 3 o'clock, and I'll give an update. But before we do that, I think we'll jump to the other priorities that we had listed on the agenda where I think Melody might not be in the room. Maybe we're going to let Dean and Matt go first. Must be present to win, is what they. So they're going to give a little bit of a presentation on the data system update, so.
All right, greetings. Hello. Thank you. It is indeed an exciting opportunity for us to give you a quick update. Essentially, I guess we're calling this more of a status report. And it's an opportunity for us to take the couple of days that we had at the conference recently in Kearney and condense those into about 10 minutes. So that you get a chance to understand a little bit about the update of where we are in this transition of our world in data collection from NSSRS to Advisor. So we'll practice that opportunity of discussing and how to say that here over the next 10 minutes or so. So, one of the things that was critical as we presented and discussed this process and this opportunity here a couple of weeks ago in Kearney at the NSSRS to Advisor data conference, we brought to light the key foundation of the strategic vision and direction that you all set and the five roles. They're critically important and they are embedded as an integral part of what it is that we're trying to achieve with regard to this whole notion of NSSRS to Advisor. What we wanted to do is take a brief moment, and we shared this a bit with the audience as well in Kearney, but we wanted to share sort of the why. Why did we start this process? And we boiled this down into three numbers. These three numbers are 655,000, 100 million, and 317,000. Those are the three numbers that we wanted the audiences and all of you to sort of be aware of. And is as a key sort of driving force in making some of the changes and transformation. So hopefully, you're asking, well, what do these numbers mean? Yes, yes, so this isn't a Jeopardy question. But ultimately, the 655,000 actually are the number of hours that our school personnel spend annually submitting data to us at the Department of Ed. And this came from a legislative study, LR 264, that was commissioned a couple, three years ago around education data systems and the processes in Nebraska. And so that number, we did, I did some like little creative kind of conversational pieces. But if we took those hours and we sort of used the calculation of being awake 24 hours a day, seven days a week for 52 weeks out of the year, it's actually about 75 years that are spent by a person each year in getting us data. Now realizing that not everybody can work 24/7 for every day, so let's bring that down into eight hours a day, five days a week for the 36 weeks. It's 455 years of time, of capacity, that are spent sending us data at the Department of Education. And so, share those numbers with you to kind of put into context the incredibly important decision that we made in finding ways to be more efficient in this work. So, the second number was 100 million. This, too, came from the study that was conducted. And it really is the number of dollars that are spent annually in Nebraska on software licenses, systems, and the staff time to provide us data and provide those particular pieces of information. We also found in the study that there's significant access inequities depending upon the size of school, the location of school, to these particular resources. And whether they're in supporting digital learning or they're in connecting different pieces of those processes, the inequities were very clear. We also found that there's often redundant data sources. So this system didn't talk to this system, which didn't talk to this system. And so oftentimes, the same data was being implemented and shared and stored in three different separate systems. That creates redundancy. It also varies your security processes and some of the privacy potential issues that are associated with that. So all of those things sort of boiled up into this place where we proposed and started to work through the process of adopting a standard. So, a standard not around the educational learning pieces of what we're most often familiar with in education, but a standard that allows for the data to become interoperable and the expectations among and across the systems become a part of that work. So in Nebraska, we adopted the EDFI standard. The primary focus was to create this consistent base, increase our accuracy, create a foundation for this, what we characterize as a digital ecosystem, allowing for the interoperability among and across the systems within a district and across districts for us. And really, sort of, if you think about it, it's like the foundation that allows for innovation to happen around it. So as a part of this journey, the notion of NSSRS to Advisor and this concept of EDFI, which was funded and created as an open source resource, so it's a royalty-free, a license-free resource, was developed by the Michael and Susan Dell Foundation. And they have helped to partner in our state as well as other states in working through the implementation of this particular tool and creating some elements of efficiency. So finally, the third number, the 317,000. And my guess is some of you may or may not know what that number is already, but essentially, it's the number of public school students that we have. And it's really a big part of the functioning why. So not only do we spend a lot of time giving us data, spend a lot of resources that we think more efficiently could be garnered, but it's really about the students. And it's really about creating an opportunity for us to realize that there's increasing mobility and the interoperability of that data and the information is critically important, being able to enable digital use of information and really focus in on every student every day as a part of that work. So that was, that's the really sort of big drivers of the big why. Now, what we want to do is spend just a few minutes kind of talking about this transition, the specific transition from NSSRS, the Nebraska Student and Staff Record System, to Advisor. Advisor does have an acronym that Matt will have an opportunity to share with you in just a little bit. So I'm going to have Matt Hastings, Dr. Matt Hastings, who is the head of our Data Research and Evaluation Office here at the Department of Ed, kind of provide a bit more specifics of our journey that we have been on over the past several years.
Very good, thank you, Dean. So how did we get here? You all probably remember our favorite acronym, NSSRS, NISRS, some people refer to it. But this is the data system that we currently are working with in Nebraska. NSSRS continues to be the data system of record for the remainder of this school year. But it's a data system where we are collecting data in a flat file format, basically. That it's a manual process that districts fill out those flat files, those templates, they upload those in a manual process, they do them over manually certain timelines. When they have to make changes, we go in manually and make changes, they make changes. Thus, the 655,000 hours, in addition to other things in work of our school district, hours among our schools' staff to submit data for purposes of accountability only, I want to stress that, 655,000 hours for purposes of producing the data for accountability. This is not for necessarily school improvement, this is not for other things, it's just to submit the report to the Department of Education, the state, and the feds. So this is a very manual process that we had. It's a real challenge to improve data quality over the long run because of the manual processes involved. Oftentimes, to get files correct, to get them submitted, school districts don't necessarily have to go back to the source system and correct the data at its source, just sort of get it fixed to get it in and do what we need to do. A lot, a lot of districts do a very good job, but the system wasn't designed really to be perfect in terms of the data quality that way, having an automated process. So this is a system that we've had for 10 years now. So in the, in the data world, that's a long time. I'm sure none of you have operating systems or something on your computers that are 10 years old at all, but we've got a lot of good use out of this system, but for a lot of different reasons, many of which are tied to the findings of LR 264 study, it was time to find a replacement. So, part of the impetus as well for the new data system that we're implementing now, Advisor, was a grant that we received in 2012. This was an SLDS grant from the United States Department of Education. It provided some seed resources for us to create, what you see here in bold, this comes directly from the grant application, but a data analysis tool for school districts that uses multiple local and state data sources to produce reports that help school districts. So the, the goal for that 2012 grant, or one of the goals that we had, was to create a data dashboard, something that could integrate data from multiple sources to help schools with school improvement. It wasn't, it's not a reporting tool, it's not for federal or state accountability, it's a tool to use that consumes data to help teachers in a classroom support and make better decisions for the students. That's something that we'd never done before. A number of districts had tried to create things like that, but there had been a number of failures across the state because we didn't have a data standard. Data was different depending on wherever you went. To get it standardized in a way that an application could consume it easily and use it was very challenging. And so, we went through a process here with a number of pilot districts across Nebraska, received a lot of input into how we might create that dashboard. And throughout that process, the 10 pilot school districts said to us, you know, we think this is great, we like what we're doing with the dashboard, and, but if we're going to go to this work to standardize our data in this way for the dashboard, why don't you just use that same system and for our accountability data? We said, okay, well, why don't we, right? So that's kind of part of the, that along with the findings of LR 264 was really the birth of Advisor. So Advisor is an acronym, I don't think anybody refers to it as such, but Advanced Data Views Informing Student Educational Response. Again, Advisor was the original name of the dashboard, right? So it was, it was about data views for the teacher in the classroom. But it has, that name's kind of stuck, and so it's since been co-opted to represent multiple things. There's the Advisor Dashboard, which you've probably heard us talk about before, in addition to the Advisor Data System. So the data system is that which holds the information which powers the dashboard, but will also provide our state federal accountability reports. This is a high-level view of what the, the technical system looks like, the architecture looks like. And what you'll see on the left-hand side there, and this is really key, I want you to understand this because this is a big leap forward for us. We have CIST represented there, but you could think of multiple data sources being there. That's the Local Student Information System. The way Advisor works is data at the local level, at the LEA level, is being transferred from their local student information systems or other systems such as SRS, a system many districts use for special education. And the information that's held there, that which is needed for the state reporting or state purposes, is transported near, in near-real time automatically. So when a school district makes changes in their CIST or in their SRS, those districts automatically flow into the Operational Data Store for Advisor. And so there's no need to do the manual, the additional two, three, four steps, the manual steps involved in producing files solely for the purpose of, of state reporting. As long as the local school district is using their student information system, their source systems as they would want, the information flows in an automatic way to the Department of Education. So this is where I was talking about earlier in terms of both time involved that's being saved, but also data quality, this is huge. Because, because the information flows directly from the source systems, when the source systems are correct or the information has changed, that information then is flowing automatically to us for the purposes that we need. That Operational Data Store then overnight publishes data to a couple different places, a data warehouse where we aggregate information for purposes of the state and federal reports that we have to do, but also on the top there, that's also the systems that we use to power the Advisor Data Dashboard. So. I talked to you a little bit about this, but we had nine pilot districts that worked with us from across the state to create the Advisor system. We then had a series of early adopter districts that were kind of our second pilot, if you will. We had about, about 20 of those. In 2015, 16, our pilot districts first began loading data into our Operational Data Store or into the Advisor system. In 1617, those EAP, those early adopter districts were loading data into the Advisor system. And in 1718, where we are now, most of our districts, all but five, have got their data or are loading data into the Operational Data Store. So this has not been something that just happened overnight. This has been a journey, we've talked about this for a lot of years, right? That we've been working with school districts, working with their vendors to get people moved onto the system. And that's because on June 30th, we'll officially retire the old NSSRS system. It will have, at that point, given us 10 years of good service and we'll be decommissioning it and shifting over to the Advisor system there. So as of today, about 239 districts have their data reporting into the Operational Data Store. If you're curious how this works, so, for example, here's one day. So on April 2nd, the data is transferred automatically, it uses a process called an API, or it's a web service to transmit that information. On April 2nd, 2.8 million API transactions were recorded to transmit data into the Operational Data System. On average, that, those transactions are about 2 million per day. And so this is a much more sophisticated system than obviously what we've been working with in the past. These are the percent of schools that are complete with their Advisor transition. On the left-hand side, you'll see there the student information systems. Those are really where most of the information right now is coming from into Advisor. You'll see that virtually everybody has their, their districts on and publishing data except we have a couple of the five left that we talked about before. So, a couple of things that maybe we want to just highlight, outstanding leadership and partners, folks that have been working very, very, very hard for three years to make this a successful transition. First off, we have a fantastic team with the Data Research and Evaluation Crew. Some of them are here with me today. If you guys want to raise your hands. Have done just a huge amount of work to make this transition to Advisor system that's going to reduce burden on our school districts, we believe, help to reduce costs as well. And they have done that implementation with basically the federal investment that we got through the 2012 SLDS grant. But beyond that, many of the requests that we've made to the Legislature and others for funding this process and this transition have not been funded. So they have done a fantastic job of making this transition successful with limited, limited resources. They deserve a great deal of credit for that. The Educational Service Unit Coordinating Council has been very helpful to us in this process as well. This has been a partnership with them to get Advisor up and going and implement it. The local ESUs, as well as the districts themselves, have all done just a fantastic job, as well as third-party vendors, companies from across the country that are working with our school districts that we've partnered with to make sure that their systems are working to flow data in here. It's been very, a very, very big project.
Very big, I think, is the key, a key statement to describe the challenges and opportunities that we have had as a part of this work. I want to sort of jump in and talk about real quickly the support and sustainability because it's something that we've continued to build on from the, from the federal investment and partner with folks to help move elements of this forward. But as we look to the future, not only are we hoping to repurpose those hours of that 655,000 hours and find more efficient ways for connecting the ecosystem, but we hope and plan for some enhancements and some opportunities for us to make these systems even more robust and available to Nebraska schools in supportive education. And so, in the coming months, as we start talking through biennial budget request process, as we start talking through other kinds of strategic investments, once again, the sort of infrastructure that oftentimes non-sexy stuff, the plumbing behind the scenes that helps connect all of the dots, is really hard for, for people to really get behind and understand. But without it, we can't do the amazing cool things that we're poised to do. And so, in addition to the amazing work that's happened with DRE and other partners, we sort of look to the future and want to be very strategic about the investment that we request and think through and ultimately hopefully have your, your support in making, making that happen. So finally, the Data Conference, which was held April 16th and 17th out in Kearney, we had 650, 52, I think, final registrants that were a part of that, which was over 200 districts, had representatives there, many of them sent teams of people, which was a terrific approach to the process. Most all of our ESUs were represented and our initial evaluations really demonstrated a very positive engagement. And so, we'll have a couple of our keynotes, including cameo appearance of our Commissioner, Dr. Blumstedt, and Dr. Lee Jenkins, who did a wonderful conversational session. We'll have those available online for those that would like to see those, kind of understand a little bit more about kind of the conversations associated with that. So with that, our, our hope was to provide a quick down-and-dirty status report of the last three years. Hopefully, it's been beneficial to you. Thank you, Matt. Any questions?
Go ahead, Mo.
Maybe you already answered this, but going back to the why of the 75 years, the 455 years, under this new software and everything, how many years have been reduced?
So, so it's a great question, because right now, we've probably have expanded it because we're doing two systems at the same time. So this is our transition year with that big bubble, when we've got two things happening in the parallel space. So that's been a big part of the tension. And so, inherent to what we plan to do is, is to reevaluate, where are we then with the hours being spent? But more importantly, what are those hours, what's the change in the use of those hours? So, the intent is to get away from manually doing the manual work and getting to a place where now they've got access to automatic data or data that's been processed automatically that we can, again, focus on data quality, focus on the use of that data to help make decisions locally in the planning process. And so, it's really about repurposing those hours. But from an evaluation perspective, that's a big part of what will be the next, the next part of our step.
We went to do an extensive, a really extensive study when we did that LR 264 study for the Legislature. And I would expect that after we get Advisor now implemented for a year, we follow back up for, for the evaluation that Dean's talking about, so we can come up with a new estimate of the hours. And I'm confident that we're going to greatly reduce those over time.
Well, I just know that in talking with a lot of various individuals in school districts, this is always, I mean, they know the data has to be put in, but that it is very, very, very time-consuming.
Yes.
Thank you, Mo.
Anything good we can do is good.
Yes, Lisa.
First of all, thank you for all the work. That was one of my concerns hanging on the board during from schools about, oh, thank you, Drew. About the amount of time it took to enter data. I think this is going to help. My question is, the SLDS grant availability that you had in 2012, and you're talking about a biennial budget request, will those grants be available in the future?
So it's a, it's a great question. So the SLDS grants are funded from the federal level. And so, that's sort of, from year to year, those opportunities are, continue to happen. I think currently, there are resources budgeted at the federal level to continue the 2015 grants that were awarded. We applied for a 2015 grant. The program moved its priorities to focus on data use and not data system development. And so, we, a big part of ours was around using data, but it had a big part of it was really still about building the systems. Because a number of the states have spent state resources in building their systems, and so the federal resources were about the really cool bells and whistles and reports and, and those kinds of things that, that we're able to make that happen. So needless to say, we were unsuccessful in our bid in 2015. We have heard some rumors about a 19 or a 20 grant competition, depending upon if those resources are available. But again, it's competitive against 54 other state SEA-type applicants. And depending upon what their particular needs are and whether, how well they match up. And so, part of what we're then thinking is the biennial budget process is our mechanism for having strategic state investments in systems that help us become more efficient and provide supports for schools. And so that's what we're targeting.
Thank you.
Rachel.
I've got a couple of questions, and thank you for the presentation. It was, it was great to get the updates. And since you did such a great job in quantifying hours, can you quantify some dollars? I think this is another example of a great value-added benefit that we're providing to schools, similar to the value-added benefit of ACT and of MAP. And I think the conversation needs to change around how we can do some statewide processes and fund some initiatives that actually have a benefit statewide, and this is a good example of one of those. So could you, not today, but sometime, come back, share, how would you quantify from a dollar perspective the value-added benefit that this has been to our schools? You know, you talked about the number of hours, there's a cost associated with the hours, but there's a cost that's associated with the development of what you've put together with Advisor. And so, I think we need to have that conversation about how do we better communicate value-added systems of support? And that's what this is, is a value-added system of support. So I guess more of a statement than kind of a question. Because unless you have the dollar figure right off the top of your head.
I would just add to that, Rachel, I agree with you 100%, and I think that we can come up with some models to try to do that.
To do that.
I, I just want to mention, just so you know this as a board, that there are some things about this transitioning to this system, and we talked about this when we talked about a standard, that we can, we can try to estimate the, the value of it to us. But just so you understand. But just so you understand fundamentally what part of this is about, you'll remember back in your history books when trains in the United States were first traveling, and there was a big debate about
Right.
the gauge of the track. Are you going to go this wide, are you going to go four and a half feet or three and a half feet? And likewise with telephones and cellular phones, in order for there to have the opportunity to develop business and commerce and usage, everybody had to agree to a standard. We're all going to use a four-foot gauge, or we're all going to use a certain protocol for our cellphones in order to send and receive text messages. What we're doing with the education data standard here is creating a standard now such that even into the future, school districts will be able to tap into and use their own data in a way with their own third-party vendors in a much more efficient way than they ever could have before. So there's a lot of really exciting things there to...
And that's really the value-added premise, no different than what we've done with assessment in many respects. It creates not just what we benefit from, from a state reporting perspective, but from the utilization that occurs at that local level.
Yep.
I think that's really an important part of that value-added benefit concept. You indicated there were five districts that were not connected yet. I'm assuming that's kind of happening.
Yeah.
Do you, off the top of your head, about how many students? Were they like small districts, large districts?
Relatively small districts. I'll tell you, with those, those...
Small percentage of students basically impacted by those five districts.
Probably statewide, less than 2%.
Okay. And then the last question is really, when you talk about advisor starting to really fill in that, that need for some of the reporting elements and the compliance elements, feedback I received from superintendents recently in Northeast Nebraska was a level of frustration with reporting as it relates to Rule 10. And are you, have you set into place the processes that this will replace some of the reporting requirements by being able to utilize the data system? Because what they were indicating is many of the things that they're asked to report on Rule 10 to us is in advisor. So is, is there a need, or have we aligned our department reporting expectations with data that could be currently pulled from advisor, or a plan to add elements that could then be pulled, so that we reduce that reporting expectation of duplication of data pulling for different reports in the department?
What I would say is that the, this new infrastructure and the way it operates in a near-real-time format, and with the greater ease with which districts can transfer that data to the department, we are in a much better position to be able to consume that information and use it in a way to replace any other reporting that we have across the department than we've ever been before, in a much, much better place to do that. So that's, that's the first piece of it. The second piece of it then is the actual work of saying, okay, now, what things can we check off and replace with data collection A, B, C, or D? I think there's work that still needs to happen on that side of the equation. But over here, in terms of the, the system's capability to do that, it's, it's absolutely a much more highly sophisticated, much more capable, we can do that than we've ever been able to do before.
Well, with a number of districts that you do have on and where we are, it would seem to me if some of that can be accomplished for the reporting time periods that are going to be coming up this fall for schools, that would be another real value-added benefit to our schools.
I, I would totally agree, and the, the only thing that I, I would add is, in addition to being set up with the infrastructure and having the opportunity to look through those pieces, a bit of those strategic investments that we have not received would have helped expedite a number of these other pieces of the puzzle. And so, Matt and the team have been very strategic about, we only have this amount of resources, and so let's focus on the infrastructure, because without it, everything else crumbles. And so, these other pieces, we've been working on projects to look at helping districts complete the civil rights data collection automatically through elements of this. And all of these other collections, that just takes time, that we haven't been able to focus and dedicate to that yet until we get over the, the infrastructure hump.
Anything else?
Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you very much.
Thank you. It's Melody, I'll come up next. One thing I was going to tell you when I was speaking at the data conference, and I didn't know the data element that they're looking at, or the feedback that they're looking at, because Matt Hastings said, well, you know, they didn't rush the stage while you were up there in anger. And so that was a good, a good, I said, I didn't know that was part of the data they were looking at, but it was good to know that that wasn't it. So thanks to that, and that whole team, and everyone's efforts on that, it's been very impressive, so. I'll turn it over to Melody when she's ready.
Where's this? Oh. Just got to be smarter than the, be smarter than the, than the equipment. All right. For the record, I am Melody Hobson. I'm the administrator of the Office of Early Childhood. And I'm here to give you a quick update. We're about midway through a grant that Nebraska received from the National Association of State Boards of Education. So, thought it was a good time to talk to you about that. And NASB has a small grant that goes to a couple of cohorts of states, and the purpose is to help state, state boards provide leadership regarding early childhood workforce issues. And this was, this is a two-year grant. It was originally given to, awarded to two cohorts of states. The original, well, the original cohort was 2016 through 2018. And last year, when state board member Maureen Nichols was at the early childhood meeting, we were recruited a little bit. So she brought that information home, and Pat kind of took it and ran with it, and we applied, and we were accepted in the fall of 2017. And, and so then, we'll be, we'll be using like a no-cost extension, because the original ones are pretty much done. And so we'll be working through them, through the next year. So the strategy that, to get the information that we need is really to collaborate with the Buffett Early Childhood Workforce Commission, to, to really look at the area of focus. And with that, we chose that because Buffett has, I mean, there are a number of other things in Nebraska that are happening around workforce. The ones you've probably heard of are the Buffett Early Childhood Institute and the Buffett Early Childhood Workforce Commission. And we thought that it was important to, to work with Buffett, because first of all, they're good partners. And second of all, you guys have a unique, a unique vantage point in that you have influence over a significant portion of the early childhood workforce, and that working with Buffett to, to really look at this in the broad sense made a lot of sense. And so for the Workforce Commission, their goals are to help create a shared early childhood workforce vision. And if you know anything about early childhood, you know that, that it is a very disparate, some would say fragmented system or multiple systems. There are multiple state and federal agencies that have some sort of, of control or regulation. There are entities that require the workforce to have nothing more than a high school diploma to, obviously, school districts that require certification, and federal special education requirements require in addition to that, the specializations in, in special education. So it is very, very, very broad-ranging. So the second goal is to create a blueprint for transforming Nebraska's early childhood workforce. Third is develop implementation plans, obviously, and then to facilitate and promote collaboration among stakeholders. And, you know, there, even though Nebraska's a small state, and a lot of us know each other, or we know someone who knows each other, there still are a fair number of, of entities that kind of, we all kind of need to be working in the same direction. So it, it made sense for us to be working with Buffett, and for, for Buffett to take the lead on this part. Buffett, the Workforce Commission does have three workgroups right now, and they center around qualifications. I believe Pat is, is on that group. And funding. And with funding, looking at the, the public and private funding that goes into early childhood right now, how is it supported? What needs to happen? Are there ways we can repurpose some of the funding or reallocate things that are out there? How do we braid funding? And, and how do we really support a quality workforce so that our children are best supported? And finally, the last is public commitment, kind of helping to come up with, helping to help Nebraskans understand the importance of the early years, and then how important that the caregivers and the teachers that are working with our, our young children, how much did they affect the, the young children's lives and development? And then again, with that, there is representation from both the state board and NDE on the Workforce Commission. The representative from the state board is Pat. NDE representatives are Dr. Freisen, me, Theresa Barubi, who is the Part C 619 Coordinator in the Office of Special Education, and then Joan Lubers, who is the Head Start State Collaboration Director. Her job is specifically to make sure that the needs of children in poverty are, are articulated in state settings. So between the five of us, I think we, we're there and we, we represent. So that, I'm, I'm not on the same workgroup as Pat. I'm on the funding workgroup, and so that's always a lot of fun. And with that also, we, we did a little bit of partnership, and we contracted with Camille Charlet, who is from workforce, from, from Buffett Institute, and she facilitated a focus group for us, the participants. We started out with some of the people who are on the Workforce Commission, and then we added a couple of people to get some broader representation and broader points of view. So we had Education Association, we had rural schools, we had someone from higher ed, we had district administration, we had several different people, a different, like a more metropolitan district and then a very rural district. We had a community childcare person who is actually, who is a, who directs a rated, a highly-rated program in Step Up to Quality. And then we had someone who has been working in professional development in Head Start for a long time. So we had the, the focus group with some very tightly identified questions to help, help kind of focus our thinking. And we planned to have it in like March, and we got snowed out. So we had that in April, and we could have gotten snowed out then too, but we were lucky. And so with that, we're, the, the focus group information has been transcribed, and we're now beginning to examine the themes that we got from the, the focus group. We're comparing them to the themes of the information that are coming from the Workforce Early Childhood, Early Childhood Workforce Commission. And then our next steps are going to be to kind of look at what those themes are, to prepare some possible, some possible statements to bring back to committee, to, for, for you guys to look at, for your input on, you know, what, what your next direction would be, and, and then for possible adoption at some point. We also, just being less than a year in, we were, we went to the annual network meeting, so they had all of the states who are in the first cohort and finishing up, and then the second cohort is just beginning to start. So we're kind of like on the fence in the middle. But Maureen and I represented Nebraska at the meeting last week, and so we had, there were three panels. It was, it was actually quite an interesting meeting. First panel was what makes a high-quality pre-K program, they're national experts, and essentially the takeaway was, high quality doesn't happen by accident, and workforce is key, and which is something that I think we would all agree with and know. The second panel was about mapping barriers to advance early childhood workforce. And essentially, this is also another one, that while we learned a lot of things, what it boiled down to is early childhood field is complex, and there are lots of desperate, desperate regulations, varying levels of quality, and so getting handled on it takes a lot of care. And the third panel was actually, the first cohort of states was, we were on a panel. And our takeaways were essentially, we, we have success when we leverage multiple initiatives, when we work with other, other entities in the state. New York has worked with their, their, they have a different system than we have, different regions. So they, they've used some additional, kind of, built their work into some of the stuff that was already going on in their state, as Iowa looked at their department and kind of did the same thing. So we feel like, we, I felt a little bit of validation that, yeah, we're, we're heading at this in the right direction. So, anyway, Ed, any questions?
Yes, Lisa.
It's, it's not a question, Melody, it's just, David Jesperson put an article on our website about how well and early childhood is doing in Nebraska. And so I really appreciate your, and Maureen's and all of that coordinating to make that happen. It's like we're in the top 17 in some areas and even better in other areas. And I think one of your points that's so important is public commitment is needed. A lot of people in the public don't realize how important that early childhood is for the future of the child. So thank you all who have been involved in this. It's really important.
Thank you very much. Go ahead, Rachel.
I just want to give a shout-out to NASB and the opportunities our membership does provide for us. So this is a good example of, again, of for us, kind of that value-added benefit of our membership in NASB is from some of the committee work and grant work that we've been involved with in this one. It's another great example. Thanks.
That's it.
I'll make it quick, John. That's the first thing that was said at the Early Childhood Summit. When the speaker got up, she said right away, why can't all of the states be just like Nebraska? And we want, you know, you're setting, you're setting the standard. And I was really proud to hear that. It's very important that we set standards. I love it when Nebraska's number one.
Me too.
Thank you, Melody. Thank you to you and your team, and Maureen Nichols, Patricia Ten. Thank you so very much for your diligent work in regards to obtaining that grant. Thank you. Commissioner?
Yeah, thanks, Melody, and Dr. Sharver over here as well. So thanks for ongoing commitments in early childhood. My, my, I guess my next step here for you is, I'm going to kind of combine items 3.3 with, with John's permission anyway, 3.3 being the Commissioner's Appraisal Committee and a little bit of my report. I put in, in front of you part of my, I guess what we'll call is the summary relative to part of, summary of part three for my appraisal process in front of you. And really, the committee had asked me, I think, last month when we were talking about it, to come back and do a bit of a summary of some of the evidence around that particular approach. I will say that the committee worked on, and I think we've talked about it in December and again in January, kind of a transition to how you would go about an appraisal process with, with my role and how we accomplish that. So I'm just going to talk through it, and I'm going to spend just a couple of minutes on that, and then I think your intention is to go into exec session and be able to discuss that. I, I do know you completed the parts one and two already, and I understand John has summarized to, to share with, with you in, in exec session. I always love the motion, by the way, when you go into exec session, that says something about not doing needless harm to, to my reputation, and I, I do appreciate that. I do, I do well enough on my own, is what I would tell you, so. No, I, I do appreciate the time and energy. I, I think I want to highlight the importance of the relationship that we've developed between the board and, and in my case, as the commissioner, and the type of model that I think's so important for us, that you, number one, hold me accountable to the things that I said I was going to do, and that the things that, that I said I was going to do are part of a, a ongoing conversation always with the board, and I think that's very good practice. So what I wanted to hit on, and I know we shared this a couple of months ago, but there are two primary performance targets that we put into this, into this part of the appraisal. Number one, to implement a plan to accomplish the board's strategic plan goals identified to be in place by 2018. So looking specifically at the strategic plan, there were five different goals that were, that were highlighted. 3.1, that was a baseline and benchmark, so it'd be about, developed to track all students with a disability. I won't go through each of these in all detail, but 5.1 was the state board will adopt a comprehensive approach to define and measure civic readiness. Goal 6.1 was utilize the baseline data from the ACT long-term, or utilizing the baseline data from ACT long-term goals will be developed for 11th grade. By 2018, or goal 6.2, by 2018, the department will implement an assessment system to measure achievement and growth. achievement and growth, grades three through eight. And then also, goal 7.1, NDE will develop and implement a statewide teacher equity plan. Those five goals fitting underneath that performance, when I presented back, I think it was in January, I presented the website that has some of the data and some of that that backs up these various goals. We highlighted these goals and I thought it was important to share that in looking at these particular, these are all goals that were not exactly the metric type of goals that you might, might normally have. These were all goals where the board said thou shalt go out and get these things accomplished over the next, the next year. And each one of those, we have a bit of that report for there. I also did, I put on here and you don't have it all in front of you, but I did a presentation in December where I outlined the implementation plan that was really important for how the agency is going to be organized to accomplish the work of the strategic plan and I set out several commissioner priorities as part of that particular effort. And that actually plays pretty well into the performance target too, where what we talked about in that and what the committee helped identify as an important performance target is that, that some, that I take on and lead the strategic organization of the department to align with the strategic vision and direction. That included a couple of additional goals. Goal 1.1, by 2018, NDE will be organized through personnel and process, regulations, inter-agency collaboration, data system, fiscal responsibility and evaluation that will provide leadership and enhance school support systems in Nebraska. One of the pieces of evidence that I include in here is just the organizational chart that we've beginning, have started to implement. I think I shared with you an email that I shared with all staff back in February about the announcement of how that was gonna be organized and where we're gonna go. Just earlier this week, I presented to an all-staff meeting again, further steps to be able to get that organized. But key to that has been thinking about the Department of Education organized in a fashion that has three different distinct divisions. One focused on student and client success, that's led right now by Deputy Schultz is the way I'll put it. I don't know if I need to get them all stars, I was just thinking about that. And another division organized around school improvement and support systems led by Deputy Freisen. And then really the agency support services that are led by Deputy Halsted. It's fun to say deputy, deputy, deputy. So I don't know if it's fun for them, but. And actually, it's been, it's been quite a few months, even since that, that last report where I kind of started to present that. And I remember presenting that to you at the board meeting in December and having kind of little icons that identified who was doing what part of that work. We've, we've continued to do that work and build out operational plans. They were working very hard with the, the structure that we began to implement across the agency. But I think it's really interesting because we had connections across the agency that are just starting to be realized, even further realized since I've been here. The connection between voc rehab and special education is important. The connection between career education and special education and voc rehab is important. The connection with adult basic education is part of that conversation. So when you start to look at how we serve individuals, how we serve our students, how we think about those things being connected, we've really taken that work and the organizational structure itself helps us carry out, carry out the mission and direction of the State Board. I think also with our school improvement work, when you look at that, there's, there's a lot of evidence of that work and what we've done. And I know even in our committees, as we have those conversations today, to think about how assessment really becomes part of the school improvement process instead of simply an accountability system. And so that's part of the goals that, that I think there's evidence behind the organization itself that we're getting accomplished, that we're thoughtful about how those systems tie together. And so I'm very proud of, proud of the work that's happened on school improvement, the work that we continue to imagine in supporting schools, even from what we've done from priority schools and otherwise. And so that's, that's evidence that I want you to at least consider of whether I've accomplished any of that work. And then I think around the organization itself, I'm, and again, I can't really take credit for it, but you have organized the State Board in such a fashion that makes us be thoughtful about what happens on a, from a finance and budget perspective, where we can spend time being purposeful on, on where we, where we spend energy and policy on those fronts. I know that even the data side of that equation, that's, it's so connected, but that's really underneath our, our agency supports that's underneath Brian for that, for that data research and evaluation side of the equation. But it's a support for the whole agency, but really the whole system of education in Nebraska. If you just think about the work that happens on school finance, which is remarkable work on a day-to-day basis with a few folks, that's taking place there. But they're all working together on the, on those fronts. When you start to talk about what the, the value of that data system is, there's also been a big push at a national level to tie finance data to these conversations. And, and we've pretty much been told thou shalt get that done as well. If it wasn't for the thoughtfulness of our, of our team, Dean Folkers and Matt Hastings and all the folks on data research and evaluation, that wouldn't even seem possible right now. And so I'm really proud of how that's come together. I'm proud to see the organization coming together on those fronts. I mean, I tell you, I say all those things and there's trepidation in the agency, you know? These are changes that we're making to ensure that we can carry out that work. That's, that's a tough time. And trepidation because there's budget cuts and other things that are happening. And I, I've tried to make clear that I want everyone to be able to see how they fit into the work of the State Board, into the work of the strategic plan and make sure that they can connect that. So even our process on how you evaluate me is actually increasingly similar to how we will go about evaluating those throughout the organization. And so it seemed like when I first got here, the evaluation appraisal process was disconnected from our goals. Part of our work is to make sure every individual is connected to the, the goals of the agency, making sure that that's tying together with, with your strategic plan. So, so I present that just kind of in a, in a summary of the, of the evidence, I give you that, that piece of paper is at least a reminder of some of that you can take into consideration or throw out any of the evidence that you don't think is good enough for that. But I look forward to your thoughts and comments and as you go through that process.
Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you very much, sir. Do I hear a motion to go into executive session?
I have to read the part about entry. I move that the State Board go into executive session to discuss the Commissioner's job performance and appraisal in order to prevent needless injury to the Commissioner's reputation.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
So be it. Let's move into executive session. Thank you.
Whitzel?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Poe Johns?
Yes.
Wise?
Yes.
Ricky?
Yes.
McPherson?
Yes.
O'Halloran?
Nichols?
Yes.
Seven yes, one absent.
Motion to exit executive session.
I move that the board come out of executive session.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Frickie?
Yes.
Co-Johns?
Yes.
Wise?
Yes.
Whittle?
Yes.
O'Holleran? Tim?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
McPherson?
Yes.
Seven yes, one absent.
Thank you, Denise. In regards to we'll move along with our agenda, Vice President Tim, please report on Policy Committee meeting, please.
We will have one action item to propose tomorrow to approve the proposed revisions to State Board Bylaw B three. State Board Member Code of Conduct, the Policy Committee recommends to approve proposed revisions to be three at their business meeting tomorrow. We had one discussion item, the four-year review of State Board Bylaw B nineteen, which is computer equipment, Internet access, and electronic acceptable use. We are reviewing that. We'll make some minor division revisions and we'll bring that back to you as an action item in June. And we will be doing a four-year review next month on State Board Policy BP nine, Ethics, Accountability, and Disclosure. That's it.
Thank you, Pat. Appreciate it. Rachel, please report on the Legislative Committee meeting, please.
I'm going to ask Brian to come up, Brian Halsted, Deputy Halsted, and he will just talk a little bit about some of the information that you have in your, in Spark. And then we have a legislative retreat coming up next week on Wednesday, May ninth, and we'll have a more extensive report at the June meeting from our retreat. So if you want to just highlight some of the summary documents that are in Spark, thanks, Brian.
Sure. Brian Halsted, Deputy Commissioner, I think as everyone's well aware, the hundred and fifth legislature adjourned, signed, and die last month.
Amen.
You have there a four-page document that summarizes bills that have an impact on NDE and each one of those bills, there's a notation about work that we're going to have to be doing in the rest of this year and moving forward. So that's it. I would say you had a very successful legislative session, even though the session may not have been what everybody wanted. There were some priorities you had set up before the session even started, dealing with priority schools and making changes there to align what you expected, the Accountability Act to allow the board to do with priority schools, no less than three priority schools, and instead of the limitation that was there before. That's going to clearly help you leverage the federal law and the funds available there, a whole number of other changes that we asked for, we got. So in some sense, you had a very successful legislative session. Obviously, everybody was well aware the budget was going to be cut. I guess it's a success that our budget was only cut two percent, not four percent as it started out. So you have to make the best out of what you're handed. There's also attached there a list of the interim studies that we've identified with staff that have been identified as being the leads for those. We'll certainly have communications with the senators and the chairs of those committees going forward about if they need any help from us. They're certainly willing to do so. And obviously, the Legislative Committee, as the Chair indicated, is going to meet next Wednesday to try to lay out a better plan and process for the work of legislation moving forward this year and into next session. So, and we'll be back next month with a greater summary of the work that we all get to do. So I'll stop there.
Any questions for Brian or for the Legislative Committee?
Just, Brian, at what point do you think?
Thank you. At what point do you think we might know the cost to school districts with the reading requirements in the bill?
Interesting question. That is one piece that actually, setting up the meeting with staff to look at that piece of it and how we go about not only that one, but a number of other pieces of legislation so that we can do that coherently and effectively. There's already some work going on behind the scenes to try to identify information and resources in that regard. So I think that may be something you'll hear more about at your June meeting because we haven't yet all inside, and that's part of the conversation the Legislative Committee wants to have next Wednesday, too. So.
Yeah, if I can speak to that quickly, we did talk briefly about, we will talk about that next week when the Legislative Committee meets, that when it comes to LBE ten eighty-one and the component of the Nebraska Improvement, Reading Improvement Act, that since there are some things about whether or not we will or we may promulgate rules, that's an important part of the discussion. So that will be part of what we'll be discussing next week. What are some of those statutory recommendations that we need to take into consideration to move for recommendations for the full board?
Thank you.
Thank you, Rachel. Thank you very much. I will report on the Commissioner's Appraisal Committee meeting. The committee met and we have decided that we need to make some revisions to our original appraisal and add some more to the appraisal document. Also, we will meet next month to refine that appraisal document. Also, we met with Leslie Donlin, the attorney for the Attorney General's Office, and we discussed and affirmed a new contract and base salary for our Commissioner. And that's all I have to report. Thank you. Maureen, would you please report on the AQUEST Teaching and Learning Domain Committee?
Yes. The Teaching and Learning Committee met with three proposed action items on the agenda today. We discussed action item three point four point eight point one, which asks the board to grant the Commissioner the authority to enter into a contract with ACT to provide Nebraska Student Centered Assessment System, NSCAS, ACT plus writing and related services for two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen. And Board Members Valerie and Jeremy were here last month to discuss all that with this, but do any of you have any questions or discussion on it?
No.
Seeing none, the Committee recommends approving this action item. The Committee also discussed action item three point four point eight point two, which asks the board to grant the Commissioner the authority to enter into a contract with Data Recognition Corporation to provide Nebraska Student Centered Assessment System, NSCAS, alternate assessments and related services for two thousand eighteen, nineteen. Are there any questions or discussion, Board Members? Seeing none, the Committee recommends approving this action item. And finally, we discussed action item three point four point eight point three, which asks the board to grant the Commissioner the authority to enter into a contract with Northwest Evaluation Association to provide Nebraska Student Centered Assessment System, NSCAS, general assessments and related services for two thousand eighteen, nineteen. Board Members, any questions or discussions? The Committee recommends approving this action item, and that finalizes my report.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you very much. Patsy, would you please report on the AQUEST Student Success and Access Domain Committee meeting, please?
Yes, I will. Today, I served as the Chair for this month of the Student Success and Access Domain Committee in Molly's absence. John and Patrick were also in attendance. The Committee had a number of action items on the agenda that we are presenting to the board for consideration. First is item three point five A one on accepting the RAND Corporation grant to implement and affect, an effective violence prevention program in schools. The Committee received information from Jolene Palmer on the purpose and scope of the intended use of funds for this project. The Committee has also asked Jolene to share more information with the board.
So we are the sub-recipient of a two point four nine seven, I believe, million-dollar grant that will cover about two and a half years for us to be a participant in implementing the Good Behavior Game with at least thirty schools. The Good Behavior Game has a long research and evidence base behind it that affects violent behavior. It also decreases suicide. It increases school attendance and a plethora of other kind of outcomes. We are, we feel pretty fortunate to be able to be that, that co-recipient or that recipient to work with our schools to do that. The focus will be on sustainability. We are looking at researching and evaluating three different models of coaching and training to see which is most effective. The benefit for us is then we will have coaches and trainers available for multiple schools beyond the grant period. Thoughts or questions?
Could you also, just for their background knowledge, explain how the schools were chosen?
We actually haven't chosen any schools yet.
How they will be chosen, sorry.
So our goal is that working with the PBIS or slash MTSS behavior schools will open the door for some of our, our schools that will participate. And then we're putting out by word of mouth to and through the ESUs to see if there are other schools that might be interested.
So they'll identify themselves. I also thought it was really interesting that you said there would be nine hundred trained people when you're finished with this. I think that's amazing. Any other questions for Jolene?
Yeah, just for clarification, what's the term of the, of the grant?
It ends December of twenty twenty, I believe. It's two and a half years.
Two and a half years, okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Jolene, thank you for all your hard work. Oh, I'm sorry, Maureen, I didn't see you.
Is that thirty schools per year? Will that be sixty altogether?
The whole, two and a half years will be thirty schools, about nine hundred teachers.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Jolene. The Committee recommends approval of this item. The second item was three point five eight two, related to contracting with ESU nine for implementation of the state plan for the education of children who are deaf and hard of hearing. The Committee learned of the history and future plans of this partnership from Teresa Kuntz. The Committee has asked Teresa to share brief information with this board.
Hi.
This is a contract with ESU nine to continue our work with deaf and hard-of-hearing students throughout the state. We, all of you support the four regional programs, and this is the state liaison program that serves eight hundred and seventy students from birth to twenty-one who are deaf or hard-of-hearing. Some of the activities we do are very geared to professional development around training for educational interpreters. And if you recall, a few years ago, we increased the EIPA score from three point five to four point oh. So we're continuing to offer professional development and training in that area, as well as a wide range of training around transition planning, effective use of assistive technology devices for this population, a wide range of things. Any questions? Any questions?
In previous years, was it with ESU9 as well?
Yes, it was.
I thought so.
Yes.
Thank you.
Board members, the committee recommends that we approve this item.
Thank you.
Thank you, Teresa, so much, that we approve this item. Thank you. Next was item 3.5B1, to approve the interim program school for upcoming school, the upcoming school year. These schools are approved under the provisions set forth in Rule 18. There were no new schools added to the list for this year. The committee was briefed by Kim Snyder, and we have asked her to share additional information with the board as well.
According to Title 92, Chapter 18, continued approval for interim public program schools is granted for one school year from each July 1st through the following June 30th, and renewal is granted based upon the school's compliance with Rule 18 during the prior school year. You've been provided with a list of the interim program schools that have demonstrated compliance with Rule 18 for the 2017-18 school year, and we're here to recommend that you approve interim program schools to operate for the 2018-19 school year. Go ahead.
Are there more than 15 of these schools to begin with?
There are 15 now. They, there may have been, there have been more in the past, I know, since I've had this position. I think there may be, have been maybe three that have, maybe three or four that have closed. I can't remember off the top of my head.
Okay. So they've closed?
They've closed.
They're not open any longer?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Any more questions? Thank you so much, Kim. The committee also recommends we approve this item. Next was item 3.5C1, to improve the Nebraska Early Learning Guidelines. The committee presented a draft of the Early Learning Guidelines at last month's meeting for the board to review, and recommends approving the draft of the Early Learning Guidelines, which serve children from birth to five, and detailed learning and developmental standards. Board members, do you have any questions about this? We have Melanie Hobson here, she can answer those for us. Okay. Again, the committee recommends approval of this item. Melody, thank you for being here. Finally, the committee took up item 3.5, 3.5C2, to approve new and, and expansion for early childhood education program grants. You will see the list of proposed grantees in your board materials in Spark. The committee received information from Melody Hobson today on how the proposed grantees were selected, as well as some of the proposed activities. I invite Melody forward to share some of this information with the board.
Good afternoon. For those of you who knew on the board, the, the money for these grants comes from school districts who have had grants in previous years and then have reached a point in time when they are considered to be rolling off of state aid, and then that amount of money is available to grant out to new schools or for expansion schools. The, we, every year when we, when we have this money, we select a, we, first of all, we ask for applications for people who are interested in reviewing grants, and we try to get a broad array of people, people who have worked in programs that have grants in the past. We look for Head Start participants who are Head Start staff who work in partnership with school districts. We look for school district and ESU staff. Usually, at least one of our Early Learning Connection partnership coordinators is on the, the grant, one of the grant review teams, and then we divide them up so that no one has a personal relationship with any of the grants that they might, proposals that they might be reviewing. We do provide some information to the reviewers as to, you know, what to look for in the budget, especially because many people are not familiar with, with, you know, budget processes. And then we, and then they, they do a very good thorough job of, of selecting the best applications. And this year, we did not have all that much money. We had about 853,000. And so the, the, the ones that, that scored best, we did also look at making sure that we had a mix of school district programs who, a school district who have never had an early childhood program before, and there are four of them, of those who, districts who are beginning their first early childhood program that they're operating. And then the three other ones have a, have an early childhood program, but this will either provide for additional classrooms, or will allow school districts to serve children longer, either go from part day to full day, or they'll add different classrooms.
Board members, any questions? Thank you, Melody, for the explanation. We appreciate it and your hard work. The committee also recommends approving these grants. This concludes my report.
Thank you very much, Patsy. I will report on the Budget and Finance Committee meeting. If I could have Shane Ryan. Shane, would you please give us a briefing on regards to the, this action item?
Good afternoon. Shane Ryan, Budget and Operations Officer. We will be bringing forward a new contract for MTW, the vendor for our grants management system, for your approval next month. This is a system the department has been using since 2004. Last year, at the request of the Budget and Finance Committee, we did a request for information and received such from four other vendors, as well as MTW, and at that point in time had a recommendation that we continue to contract with this vendor. They have not increased their hourly price support or their cost of the software licensing fee since 2004, and have always provided great service for the department, and we feel a continued relationship with them is warranted for the upcoming 18, 19 fiscal year.
Any questions? Seeing none. Thank you, Shane.
Thank you.
Vice President Tim, please report on the Strategic Planning, Performance, and Improvement Committee meeting.
The Strategic Planning, Performance, and Improvement Committee met with two action items and one discussion item regarding item 3.7.8, to approve accreditation for ESUs per Rule 84. The committee was briefed by Kim Snyder on the pending accreditation for the 17 ESUs for the coming year. Kim, do you have anything to share?
You've been provided with a list of the ESUs that serve Nebraska schools, and we are here to recommend that you approve the accreditation of those.
Does anyone have any questions? Okay. We recommend approval of this. Thanks, Kim. Our next item is 3.7.8. The commissioner is seeking authority to contract with Shirley Vargas to provide the services as a student achievement coordinator on a temporary basis. Ms. Vargas is a graduate student at Harvard University. Commissioner, do you want to share some information about that?
Yeah, this is somewhat unusual for our, kind of a normal protocol, but about a, about a year ago, we were presented with an opportunity to work with Harvard for the possibility of a, of a fellowship, kind of internship type of position, and this is a doctoral-level position. So what I can tell you, and I probably won't get all of the details exactly right, is it was interesting. We actually were able to meet with Shirley, and we being Dr. Freisen and I at a, in South Dakota. She was actually working in the, the, part of their program includes the summer in a, in an agency doing particular work, or, or an entity in which they're trying to pursue particular work. And so Shirley actually comes with 10 years of experience for the New York City schools, is from New York originally, has been pursuing this doctoral-level study. And out of this fairly unique program out, at a Harvard, which I'm interested in learning more about how this, how this works, as kind of a internship, mentorship, fellowship-type of approach, she, she approached us and said, hey, look, we would be interested in, or she would be interested in exploring Nebraska as one of those possibilities. She, out of this, out of this class, and I think 60 or 70, I don't remember the exact number, she is the only one that was interested in working in a state education agency, and I suspect had probably other opportunities to do so. We're, we're very impressed with, with her, and when we've gone through different interview processes, they had quite a process. I think it's lasted probably about eight months' worth of time. We were recommending that maybe the right fit would be this very work around the student achievement coordinator. Her interest lies certainly in, in data and analysis around how students perform, but also would tell you that, you know, among her goals would be perhaps to be a commissioner, a state education leader in, in some fashion. So perhaps, perhaps at some point, you'd see Shirley back in some other capacity, but she would spend about 10 months with us in, in that particular work. I asked others who were familiar with this program, including my colleague from Iowa, Ryan Wise, actually went through this very program, and felt that it was a very good preparation for him and, and his background, and also highly recommended that we work on that. So what I, our, kind of our next steps are, we had to create a, essentially a position, and instead of creating some separate position, this position actually seems to fit her well. It makes good use of, of those resources. Currently, a vacant position at the agency in a, in a critical need, and so our, my recommendation is that we go ahead and do this. Slightly unusual, Joel said to do some extra work in how we would go about this particular contract, but essentially, she'd be filling that position for the, for, for about 10 months, I believe. I think we have, starting June 1st, if I'm not mistaken, so. So with that, if there's other questions, I'd certainly answer them as best I possibly could, anyway.
Seeing none. Thank you very much.
In our discussion this morning, I think this is really going to be a win-win situation for not only her in getting the practical experience that she want, is looking for, but also for us to have the opportunity to, to work with her. The committee had a discussion item on the ESA Plan status. The commissioners recently submitted a version to the USDE after extensive productive conversations, and there is a summary posted in Spark. And Commissioner, do you have any other comments?
Yeah, I, I think just somewhat briefly, I mean, it's been the journey that we've been on in, in the ESA process, so it was, you know, we, we actually have some information, and we'll get that, that out, I believe, up on our website now, as the ESA plan that was resubmitted. Like we described last time, there was some kind of efforts to really begin to focus how that, how the federal funds become a support system for, for our system as well, what we imagine it, it being, and some of the requirements, making sure that they met with the requirements of, of the SL law itself, but also in the dialogue back and forth with U.S. Department of Education, how that fit with our system. So we didn't want to give up elements. So we had many, many back and forth conversations, as you know, from the past probably three months or so. Our back and forth conversations got, I think, most productive when we could take little chunks of it at a time and were able to dialogue with them. I emailed Jason Botell, who's the acting secretary, or Assistant Secretary for, for ESEA today, and just said, hey, thanks to your team for, for their willingness to do that. You can read the plan. We can get you a copy of that, or if it's not already linked on the, the website, and you can take a look at that. I, I, I don't know what the next steps necessarily will be once we've resubmitted it. We haven't heard anything back so far that I know of, but we have high hopes of it being approved actually quite soon, so we can get on with the, the overall work that we've, that we've envisioned underneath AQUEST, so.
Rachel?
Yeah, could you just highlight a couple of the key changes that you've had to make in this most recent submission?
Yeah.
That were different than previous submissions?
I think there were, there were a lot of just somewhat detailed back and forth on questions around, you know, how certain things would function and whatnot, but I think the, the primary one, probably the one that's, that's been most substantial, was in the process of how we select or identify schools that would qualify for comprehensive support or targeted support. And so there was a bit of a process in other states that were successful in using a similar process we modeled after, after those other states of kind of what we call a filtering system, and looking at different data elements that would qualify the, the, the school for comprehensive support or, or targeted support based on, based on that. Before, we imagined that we run all the way through our system, and those schools that would qualify for needs improvement, those schools that would ultimately maybe qualify for priority school would be there. What we're really ending up doing is saying, we're going to use federal funds to support those schools in advance. I'll, I'll use Skylar as an example even of our, of our recent work, of how I think this would have worked if, if this had been in place, you know, at, at this point in time. I think ideally, and Skylar, as you know, received a, a school improvement grant, federal funds. Ideally, we would have been in a position like, like this, that we would have used that comprehensive support designation to be in working with Skylar for a period of time, even before we might decide to name them a priority school, because we would have a chance to be in there. As I, as I like to say, and I think when I was first hired, that I, my line was, I, we should show up to support before we show up to criticize, so to say. And, and I think this actually, the way that we've changed it, it actually allows us to use those federal funds to show up and support first, and then our accountability system then still runs as it, as we've designed it, and maybe how we redesign it for the future. We want it to align well, and I, I think this approach is, all of our data demonstrates that it, that it will actually align very well, but, but it's kind of for a different purpose, and that's been our conversation with the U.S. Department of Ed. The purpose is, but that, that they're concerned about is that we use those funds to target towards these particular schools to help them improve. And for those reasons, I think it's actually a, a good alignment. Different than what we imagined before, I, I guess the change would be, we imagined before we'd run all the way through our system, and then they would fall into needs improvement and then qualify for the service. I think this is almost like a pre-indicator of they're likely to fall into needs improvement, and that's, that's very much how we'll, we'll continue to work on that, on that kind of implementation plan.
Yeah.
At one time, the ESA plan was on our website, and so I guess my question is, as you've updated changes with Mr. Botell, are those changes made on the website?
Yeah.
And if so, can they be highlighted?
I don't know if we do the highlight changes version on there right now. No, but we could, we could get that.
That'd be easier.
So you could see a highlight change.
Because I read through that once, and I don't want to read through the whole thing.
We have put kind of a, you know, this would be as, as it's implemented now, kind of a, a draft of kind of some of the key messages around where our, our final, you know, or at least this submitted plan, and hopefully the final submitted plan, will play out with some key messages around it for you and for the public, and we'll keep working on that because there's some steps we'll have to take once it's approved to, to get that communicated well.
Mo, did you have something? Okay. Any other questions? Thank you, Commissioner. In regards to board reports, dates, and discussion items, meeting participated in joint meetings with policy partners, thank you for submitting your monthly report. Board members, reports are linked in Spark, and I encourage you to review each member's report. Tomorrow, we will vote on requests to approve attendance at meetings that took place in the past and were not previously approved. There was one meeting approval request. The requests for future meeting attendance travel from board members are linked with Spark meetings. If you have any additional travel requests to be approved, please complete the State Board Travel Request Form in your board folder and submit them to Laura and Ryan before tomorrow. Tomorrow, we approve the board request for meeting attendance. The monthly board travel expense report is attached in the Spark meetings for, for your And that comes to our adjournment, ladies and gentlemen. The regular scheduled meeting of the State Board of Education will convene at 9:00 a.m. tomorrow morning in this room. Thank you.
Can I just make one little comment?
Sure.
I'm sorry, did you?